All right, now that we've gotten through these logistics, I am thrilled to introduce our presenter today. After serving as a teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent, in 2016, Dr. Tiffany C. Anderson became the first Black woman superintendent for Topeka Public Schools, home of Brown v. Board of Education, the Supreme Court case that ended legal segregation. Dr. Anderson has served as a school administrator for 26 years, and under her leadership, Topeka has earned multiple local, state, and national awards, including three Magna Awards from the National School Boards Association for innovative approaches impacting families and the community. Additionally, she has served alongside educators and parents leading three districts in gaining full accreditation in Virginia, Missouri, and Kansas. Over her 20 years serving as a superintendent, Dr. Anderson's transformational leadership approach in addressing the needs of families in the community has been captured in articles, speaking engagements, a docu-series. And in 2016, she was selected by Education Week as one of the nation's 16 leaders to learn from. In 2023, the American Association of School Administrators recognized Dr. Anderson with the National 2023 Women in School Leadership Award. We are very grateful to be able to learn from Dr. Anderson today. And without further ado, I am going to hand it over to her.
Oh, good evening. Thank you so much, Melissa, for that introduction. I am thrilled to be here with you this evening. So we have a few handfuls of people here on this screen. We have about 300 or 400 that signed up and registered that will be getting this video. So this will be a recording that you can look at at any other time. Here's the wonderful thing. I can guarantee you that everybody on this screen, everybody that's joined this evening, the 300 or 400 people that are going to be watching this later, will all have an opportunity to learn something new. You will leave with a takeaway that you can use tomorrow. It's the whole purpose of writing the book that you can access this evening, as well as access throughout the course of this year and this summer. I will tell you now that many of those strategies aren't just from me. They're from other educators across the country. So with that, as we begin to start this presentation, let me first give you a little bit of background about Topeka. Look, every good educator loves talking about their children. And so I'm going to share a little bit about Topeka, a little bit about the space in which I come from and the privilege that I have to serve the families that I have. And then we'll get into the content for today. Let me first say on this very next slide, demographics and zip codes really can't matter. And so when you think about your mindset and how you think about your school district, and you think about where you're coming from. I come to you from, right now, Topeka, which is where I've been for eight years. But I'm a native to St. Louis. And what I've learned is that how you think about where you are, how you think about parents, how you think about involvement, makes a big difference. I see some folks from Missouri, some folks from Kansas, but some folks from all over. So whether you're in a high-poverty district, which is the title of this text that you're learning about, or whether you're in a district that's not high-poverty, that doesn't matter. And here's why. Because what works with high-poverty students works with anyone. So having said that, the picture that you see before you, my wonderful husband. When I started in Topeka Public Schools, just to give you a little snapshot, she gave my bio so that you know the space that I come from. When I talk about parental involvement and parental engagement and parent capacity, I come from the space of St. Louis, Missouri, in which I served as a principal and superintendent in a district that had 100% poverty. In that space, where I met my late husband in college, he came from a space in Memphis, Tennessee, where he went to... And I don't know if anyone is from Memphis, but if you are, say hello from Memphis or anywhere from Tennessee. He came from Memphis, Tennessee, where he lived in a high-poverty neighborhood. But what made the difference was the parents around him and his own parent. And so his mother and all of the families that were around him made all the difference in the opportunities that he received. Now, with that perspective, let's talk a little bit about Topeka. Right now, I'm in Topeka Public Schools, and I've been here for eight years. The longest-serving superintendent. In 2016, I was the only African-American superintendent in the entire state. That is no longer the case now, which proves to you that without a first, you can't have a second. And in this space in Topeka, we are now 77% free lunch, 34% Hispanic, 36% white. And you can see the other demographics down below. That was not the case eight years ago. As we have embraced parents, diversity has increased. And so we just finished celebrating the 70th anniversary of Brown v. Board and that decision. And what schools looked like 70 years ago looked very different than even what schools looked like 10 years ago, right here in Topeka, Kansas. And the diversity continues to grow. So much so that CBS came in shadow to see what we're doing here and how we are not only increasing in performance, but how we're increasing in our parental involvement. And they're wondering, how do we diversify in this kind of way? And what's going on in Topeka that's attracting diversity? So with that, this CBS Morning News, as well as CBS Thursday Evening News, was just on this past week. So I encourage you to look at their YouTube, but indulge for just a moment as you hear a little bit about what's going on in Topeka, Kansas.
Today marks the 70th anniversary of the landmark Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education. That ruling declared racial segregation in public schools is unconstitutional. So it ended the so-called "separate but equal schooling" in Topeka, Kansas, where the case originated and across the country. Janet Shamleian went to Topeka to see how things have changed in the decades since. And she found a city that's still opening its doors to change.
I think the solution to solve segregation is...
The irony of this debate on whether segregation still exists in schools in the past, they have tried doing separate but equal... is that it's unfolding in a Topeka, Kansas classroom. The district is the center of the 1954 Brown versus Board of Education ruling outlawing such segregation. The district where African-American parents filed that suit is now held by its first Black female superintendent, Tiffany Anderson, who makes daily home visits to encourage both students and caregivers. It's among an exhaustive list of changes helping students in poverty and fostering inclusiveness in a district where nearly half of students qualify for free or reduced lunch.
Are you the right person, or is this the right time?
We are all the right people. It's a matter of are we willing to do what's right for the people we get the privilege to serve?
Topeka schools are embracing their most diverse population under Anderson's leadership. Suri Yamador is from Nicaragua.
Cities, slaves.
Angelica Chernitska is from Ukraine. Amongst almost 13,000 students, some 39 native languages.
Kefes, Gora, right?
With hundreds of immigrants moving here, the school created a position held by Pular Mahia.
Just because somebody doesn't speak English doesn't mean they're less valuable to a community.
She helps parents with enrollment forms, Wi-Fi hotspots for their homes, and access to a clothing and food pantry.
They come here and they shop, basically, for what they need.
The school even added a washer and dryer for families without. It's not just the school opening doors to newcomers. Nonprofit Top City Promise
Do you like it? It's challenging.
offers driving lessons, free groceries, help finding a job, and for three months, a free and fully furnished apartment.
Being a single mom, everyone told me that it's impossible.
Larissa Chernitska moved to Kansas with her daughter in March, fleeing Ukraine amid the ongoing war.
What was it like to walk into an apartment the day after you arrived in Topeka? Fully furnished?
Yeah.
Food in the refrigerator?
Yes.
Clothes to wear?
It was surprisingly astonishing, you know? I was overwhelmed.
Yana Ross, who runs the nonprofit, has welcomed close to 200 Ukrainian families.
What's it like getting a family settled here and seeing them start to thrive?
It's very rewarding to see the children strive in school, meeting new friends.
A community working to welcome new students and their families who are in search of the same thing parents 70 years ago fought for.
Is there any connection that you can draw there between what's happening now with these kids and the situation at the time?
The connection is they all are looking for a better and brighter future. They're all hoping for something better for their lives. We're dealing with families who want more for their children.
The city were separate but equal-ended. Diversity and opportunity now thrive. For CBS Mornings, Janet Shamleian, Topeka, Kansas.
Today marks the 70th anniversary of the landmark Supreme Court...
Thank you so much for indulging for just a moment. So I can share a little bit with you about my babies. And I see that heart coming up from someone on that screen. Before we move on, I would be remiss if I didn't spend time to talk about Brown v. Board and who were these people? Who are these plaintiffs in the Brown v. Board case? But as you saw that video, something jumped out to you. If there was something that we do that you think is not typical of schools, if there's something that you think that you saw that really struck a chord with you, feel free to put it in the chat, because I'm going to be coming back to relationships and how that matters. And that can change outcomes. With that piece, I started off with the item of hope, and that was the very first screen. And I'm going to continue talking about hope. Because people that don't have hope in a community, parents, community members, those are communities that do not thrive. Those are communities that become dangerous when you don't have hope. And I'm going to share what that looks like as well. So let's talk about the few things that we're going to be touching base on in this webinar. Now, we only have about an hour together. So with that one hour that we have together, about 50 minutes left, we really won't have time to get through the entire book. But we're going to really focus in on just a key piece within the text, a key piece within this book that is an example of some of the items that you'll get an opportunity to learn. Today, we're going to talk about the history of Brown v. Board, just a few slides. So you leave here enriched with that 70th anniversary that changed all of the schools wherever we are. Now, if you're a teacher, if you're a principal, if you're a central office person, if you're a parent, and maybe all of the above, please put that in the chat so I know who I'm speaking with. If we were in the room together or if you're at any one of the keynotes that I have in the coming weeks and months, that's the first thing I ask, to raise your hand with what area and what demographic you're representing. So if you're a teacher, if you're a parent, if you're all of the above, if you're a central office administrator, I'd love to know the space that you're in, because some of what I share will be tailored fit to you. The area that we will also be talking about is parent capacity. You may be wondering, what is parent capacity? What does that look like? And how's involvement different than engagement? We won't get an opportunity to go deep into the involvement and engagement piece, but we certainly will be talking about parent capacity and defining what we're talking about and what the book says. Some of the things that I'll talk about are taken directly from the text, directly from the book. So even if you don't buy the book, you will certainly see some information that you can take with you today and use tomorrow. And then the last item is some practical lessons, some things that have just lived and learned. You got a chance to see a little bit on the video of what this looks like in action. But hope and love and grace, all of those things that really lift up a school and a school system, you'll get a chance to see that as well. Now, I'll share this with you. CBS did a second special as well. That was on Thursday night. If you go to their YouTube and look up CBS Topeka, Kansas on Thursday night, you'll also get a chance to see the second video. And it showed a little bit about what we're doing with our prison ministry in addition to the school district overall. So let's talk about who were these plaintiffs? Who are the people in the Brown case? Now, a lot of people think that maybe these were some people that were legal aides or attorneys or had some involvement in the NAACP. Not so. Now, they may have had some involvement in NAACP, but really, the NAACP came alongside them. So ultimately, the Brown case was a catalyst for change. It was a catalyst for the civil rights movement. Let me tell you, about a year later, a little less than a year later, Rosa Parks refused to give up her seat in Montgomery County, Alabama. That led to the bus boycott. So literally, the Brown v. Board case changed the trajectory of not only the nation's schools, but what the world looks like now and what the nation looks like now. 70 years later, though, we're still working to realize the promise of Brown v. Board. Although there's been some progress, we still see evidence of institutionalized racism, voter suppression, unfair housing, inequitable educational practices. Just as parents were key in 1954, let me tell you, they may remain central to solutions today. Here's the thing. If you improve schools and all of the resources and supports are for students inside the school, those students who go home and are home over the summer and in the evenings, they will go home to parents who, if their capacity is not built, that progress that you made, you may see revert back when they come back the next year after the summer break is over. That progress that you've seen made may not last. It won't be sustainable. So let's think about the 1950s. To give you just a little bit of background leading up to the Brown case as we think about where we are today and how we got here. And Plessy versus Ferguson, about 60 years prior to the case, the Supreme Court's intention was to uphold the 14th Amendment, which said equal protection under the law for all citizens. But what ended up happening was separate but equal, which led to Jim Crow, which led to a division in America with housing and transportation. Many of your cities, as I was looking at the various cities on this screen, were redlined during that time. And then in 1951, there were Black children across this country began to speak up, and especially in Topeka, Kansas. About a week or two ago, I sat down and had a fireside chat with the children of the plaintiffs. And oh my, they shared so much. Those plaintiffs included Lucinda Todd and Zelma Henderson and Sadie Emanuel Oliver Brown. But these people were parents. They were your everyday community folks, pastors and welders. And as we go to this next slide, you'll learn that these people were parents much like the parents in your own community. And when you think about those families, they chose to try to enroll their children in the neighborhood schools. What the plaintiff's children shared was they would pass by the school just blocks away from their home. And they would have to travel by bus and multiple additional blocks to get to the next school. That was the all-Black school. So these parents, the ones that I just shared about, the parents that are your everyday community folks, decided they would all try to admit their child in this school. And these were the schools that were only for white children, schools that were two to three or four blocks from their house. None of those parents were successful. And none of these parents, as I mentioned, were lawyers. But the NAACP Legal Redress Committee partnered with these families. And that led to the Brown v. Board case. In 1954, the Supreme Court voted unanimously in favor of the parents. And Chief Justice Earl Warren wrote that decision. And he stated that segregation in public education is a denial of equal protection of the laws. So to separate some children from others of similar age and qualifications solely because of their race generates a feeling of inferiority as to their status in the community that may affect their hearts and their minds. It may affect them in a way that could potentially never be undone. The ruling held that they concluded in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Now, let me ask you this. Do you feel that schools today are still segregated? Either they, yes, they still are segregated, or no, they're no longer segregated. Based on the space that you're in, are schools still today separate? And if the answer is yes to that question, that schools are still separate, I want you to think about your own community and that separate but equal has no place. Think about what schools look like in your community that are separate today. And are they actually equal? Or do you see that the outcomes in those schools are very different from one another? Keep that in mind. In Topeka Public Schools, as we go to this next slide, you'll see what things look like here. This is just a graph from 2019 to 2023. If I go back to 2016, you'll see scores that are very different. And what I saw here was redlining still in place. It's still in place today in some communities in Topeka. It's likely still in place in your area. And for those that don't know what redlining is, that was the literal red line drawn in communities so that people of color stayed within their line in that community. And there are remnants of redlining still today. In Topeka, Kansas, for example, there's an area called Tennesetown. 100 years ago, it was all Black and all poverty. 100 years later, it's still all Black and all poverty. I suspect you still have that in your community. If you want to see where the red lines in your community, I have several maps. And if you email me separately, I can likely send you that for your own city. But you can also ask your own city government to see the historical maps and the red lines and compare them to today. You probably would be surprised with where some of those red lines still exist. Achievement follows the contours of poverty. And so in Topeka Public Schools, we changed how we worked with parents. We expanded some of the services that you saw in that CBS special. And in doing that, the book was written in part from years of study about parental involvement and engagement and what makes a difference, but also from practical experience and strategies and trying what research says works. And here's what we learned. We learned that if you embrace families, if you serve the whole family, not just the whole child, but the whole family, you can change outcomes. And it doesn't matter if students are free lunch. Doesn't matter sped. It doesn't matter if it's your EL group. So this is our graduation rate from 2019. And I joined in 2016, but from 2019 to 2023. Now, some of you are looking at this, and you may be wondering, well, maybe that's because it's Topeka, Kansas. And Kansas may be different from other places. So let me share with you another graph. And as you're thinking about questions, feel free to put them in the chat, because at the very end, we're going to save some time to come back to those. If you're looking at any screen and you're wondering, I wonder about this or that, or I wonder about another subgroup. So Jennings School District, which is where I was before I came to St. Louis. And in Jennings School District, very similar. We looked at how we were treating parents, what involvement and engagement looked like, what some of the patterns were that we saw in terms of serving the whole family. And in looking at that, we changed what we did with parents. And here's what we found. Jennings was a school district that was bordering on being unaccredited. And once you're unaccredited in Missouri, they take over the school district. And so at that time, we really had a sense of urgency of making some changes. So we started with families. We're going to put in the chat, and I'll add in the chat a clip from... It's called "Don't Count Me Out." It's a docu-series or documentary about Jennings School District. My last year there, ASCD came and visited and traveled to Jennings. And now, and they used to charge for this, but right now, at least, and it could be because of the Brown case, it's free. So if you decide to look that up, that documentary interviews families and parents and teachers and students. And you'll get a chance to leave with some practical strategies that we use there. But in that district, 100% poverty, almost 100% African-American. We saw an immediate change. It didn't take three or four or five years. So if people tell you that, that is not the case. Immediate movement from being almost unaccredited to having 81% of those standards met. Subgroup achievement increased. Teachers can't do this all alone. As we move from that slide and we look at the three things that make a difference, what we learned is that these three things... And for those of you that have been in education for a while, you may remember the name Lazat and Ron Ferguson. This isn't something I made up. It came out of Harvard. These three things, if you're a teacher, these are the three things that will make a difference. These three things, if you're a principal, if you're a superintendent, these are the three things in my 20 years as a superintendent and my almost 30 years in education. Since I've come across this research, these are the three things that we're going to focus on. Now, I want you to look at this list and think about your own classroom, your own school, your own district, and which of the three... And some will say all three are broken. I travel the country, and I look at schools that are underperforming and struggling. And either it's one of these three and sometimes all three. So relationships. I'll share with you relationships being that number one. Kids will work for you and families will work for you. And they'll work to support their child, if only for you, if they trust you. And they won't if they don't. If families don't trust you, they might not ever enter the school. If parents don't trust you, they might actually not pour themselves into helping their child with their homework or believe what you say when you give them outcomes that their children have reached or not reached in school. If parents don't trust you when you say they need extra services or support or you want to help them have a special education referral, they may decline all of that, not because they don't care, but because they don't trust you. Same with your teachers. Your teachers don't trust you or the parents or the community, it may change what home they're willing to visit. It may change how they think about the strategies that you're offering and suggesting. And same with students. So people will work for you if they trust you. They won't if they don't. If you don't have relationships, the other two things can't be put in place. The second thing is an aligned, standard-based curriculum. But when we're talking about parents, this is a curriculum that parents can actually understand. In the book, we give some specific examples about how to ensure that parents who have low levels in literacy, how you can engage them and teach them, parents who have trauma, the kinds of curriculum and social-emotional curriculum that you can wrap around families, ways that you can bring curriculum to their home. The book kind of details some of those examples. And this is from practical experience. This isn't just research of what I've read. And this is from practical experience. This isn't just research of what I've read. This is research put into practice that we know. And the last one is pedagogy. Uh, this is engagement, and this is parent engagement. For pedagogy, for teachers, that's who's in front of your students. So when we think about our parents in terms of pedagogies, parents are a child's first teacher. So making sure they have the tools to uh teach and engage their children in in learning, making sure that we're teaching parents so that they can truly be the teachers at home. Those three things make the difference with parental engagement. Those three things make the difference with teacher engagement. Uh, in a few days, uh, we'll have John Hattie here, and he talks a lot about building capacity in teachers. If you take out teachers, the word teachers, and you put in parents, uh, you will see a uh the same strategies work, and those same strategies are what we're gonna be talking about here that are also embedded within the uh textual material within the book. So think about your school, your classroom, your district. If you're not achieving at the level that you'd like, which of the three are broken? It will be one of these three. If you ever go join a new environment, I want you to think of everything in terms of these three. When I join a new school district, I take one big sheet of paper and I say relationships, standards-based curriculum, pedagogy, whether I'm talking about teachers or parents, and I I list what areas are broken, which one is not working as well as it could and should work. So when you're thinking about your own environment, is it relationships? Is it standards-based curriculum? Is it all three? Is it pedagogy, the teachers that are in front of the classroom? And let me give you an example. I went and visited a school, beautiful school, just beautiful. And the principal said, you know, I I we we have a great curriculum. Uh, we uh have phenomenal teachers and we just can't get any parents to show up to any of our events. We can't get them to become engaged. We can't get parents to return our phone calls. Um, and and our test scores are so low, even though our teachers are working so hard. So I spent the course of several days at this particular school. And there were several things that jumped out. One, um, nobody liked the principal, and the principal said, I'm not here for them to love me. Well, you may, you may not be there for them to love you, but they have to trust you. Uh, no one trusted the principal uh in this particular school. The teachers didn't trust the principal, the parents didn't trust the principal. Trust is important. Uh, the the second thing that uh was a major piece, there were no services for parents that actually taught them how to be teachers for their children. No workshops before school or after school. So oh, you're right, uh, Ms. Thomas, relationships matter. They make a difference. So people, teachers, principals, superintendents that think relationships don't matter, you're wrong. It's why I always wear tennis shoes and most of my time is in classrooms and then and in the community and and not in the office because relationships matter. So as we think about how relationships matter, let me get some resources into your hands and let's talk a little bit more about parents and specific things that you can do tomorrow. Uh, many of you said all three were broken. So that means strategies in all three of those, which are embedded throughout the book, uh, you can use immediately, and some of those are long-term. There's a QR code there. I want you to leave tonight with something you can use tomorrow. That QR code leads straight to our mental health website. Educators must be trauma-informed and trauma-equipped. Let me share with you what that looks like. Uh, in Topeka, we have something called listening tours, and I talk about this in the book. Uh, listening tours uh gi- gives the opportunity to listen to learn, not just to listen to respond. And so with those listening tours that we provide, um, we hang out in places such as the laundromat, the grocery store, uh, anywhere within the community that parents gather. Here's why. Parents who've had a bad experience in school, they might not actually come to you, so you have to come to them. Um, in in uh archaic times, uh, we had a parent conferences from, you know, five to or or nine in the morning until five in the evening, or right after school from three to seven. Well, some parents, especially if they're in high poverty, work late shifts, they work night shifts, second and third shift. They're not available late in the evening, or they may not be available during the school day. So we changed really how we began servicing our families. Uh, so we began having listening tours, and we listened to learn. Here's some things that we learned. At the beginning of the year in uh twenty sixteen and seventeen, uh, parents were concerned about mental health. This is pre-COVID, and even now it's even more so. Parents shared that, you know, that suicide is a significant issue uh in Kansas and in our community, but in the nation, if you did not know, suicide is the third leading cause of death for teens. And so as we looked at this, and it was pretty uh normal to know that there would be suicides uh impacting districts all around the state, including our community, and they wanted something done about that. And so I began thinking about that, and I asked parents, what would they love to see happen? And some parents said, well, you know, we have our exams and their exams. Wouldn't it be great if we could have a mental health exam? Excellent point. So we changed um how we enroll students. On our enrollment form and our registration form, we have uh uh the three questions um and from the ACES survey. If you answer yes to any of those three, automatically you have a mental health team that reaches out to you. We went six years consecutively with no suicides. That's a no-cost system that was put in place, all from the mouths of parents. Parents who needed the service and resources, some parents who may not have had the kind of healthcare to to support their children, parents who were enrolling their children and in schools that had a fifty percent mobility, immediately overnight, it changed what we knew about our children. So today, when parents enroll, they answer those three questions. And those three questions, when they answer them, if they say yes to all three or any one of those three, one, it gives us data about what our parents have experienced. And again, if you'd like to know the three questions or any of that, just put those in the chat and we'll get to that at the very end, but those three questions have made a difference for us. Again, six years without consecutive uh any any consecutive suicides. So adverse childhood experiences, the ACES, adverse childhood experiences. We're gonna put in in the uh chat uh a little link to the ACES. It's by a lady named Doc Dr. Burke. And she came across several uh areas that when these things impact children at a young age, and I'll tell you this, if these things impact parents when they were children, they are adverse childhood experiences that will carry you throughout your life and impact the trauma that you have throughout your life, unless you intervene. This is why you might have some parents that come in and um from a, they they may hear a loud noise and 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 just lose their temper. They may come in and and act in a way that um is so emotionally dysregulated, you kind of wonder what their morning was like, but it could be because of a built-up adverse childhood experiences that physiologically changed how this parent thinks. So we provide mental health services wraparound for that whole family. But that one strategy is just one example of many. Uh, that QR code is gonna take you to our mental health website. Our mental health website has publications, it has the ACES survey on it, and it has a variety of other kinds of uh items on there that can be resources for you to use, most of which are no-cost resources. So as we go to this very next piece, we begin to research uh and look at um mental health and how it impacts families. Here's what we know. And if you go to Education Week, this is an article directly from Education Week. It was my first year here, and I started in July of twenty sixteen. By December, I wrote this article in twenty sixteen. What we knew was that building teacher and parent capacity made a difference. It impacted trauma. So in a high poverty environment, you will see more trauma than you might see in other environments um because of crime, because of lack of food and the disparities in healthcare. And so the level of trauma was so significant that unless we really looked at those stories and how the brain develops and began to address the trauma that families were experiencing, our level of absenteeism would not decline. Our level of improvement from discipline and behavior wouldn't decline. So we knew that. So this particular article, and again, if you look at that um website from that QR code, which will come up again, you'll be able to find this entire article. But this trauma-informed approach was what we took. In the book, it talks about a trauma-informed approach. It tells you how to do it. It gives you resources to do uh to implement trauma-informed services. You saw a person uh holding the hand of of a a a dog, and that person was the first gentleman. It was actually a Kamala Harris's husband that was visiting our school district, and we now have fourteen therapy dogs. We have learned that sometimes children and families uh connect with animals in a way that, and music therapy and art therapy, we've learned that they connect with other modalities of therapy in a way that sometimes uh we couldn't. And so we began to implement all those forms of therapy. We also redirected dollars. We reduced central office, and we began to redirect some of those dollars to the classroom, increased our mental health team so that every school in Topeka has a mental health team. Uh, we talk about that in the book. And so when you think about how you're using dollars or how your school's using dollars, if you're a superintendent, or if you're a parent and you wanna ask that question, investing in mental health makes a difference. Uh, think about it this way, as we go to this next slide. How often do educators attempt to teach this logical portion of the brain? Uh, and uh without creating a safe, emotionally regulated, culturally responsive environment? Often, students come into the classroom and and there, you you want them ready to learn, and you begin teaching that lesson, and you look at test scores, but we haven't created an environment that's safe. Uh, we haven't necessarily created an environment where parents and students see images that look like them. That's a relationship piece. That matters. We haven't made sure that when they leave their community and they leave their home, that they know that they uh are safe in the space that we are, and and we haven't always given tools in the classrooms and schools that helps them regulate their emotion. Uh, let me share what that looks like. Uh, for our students and our families and our parents, uh, we have created corners within our schools where parents have parent corners and they have some um social emotional materials that they could use. We provide therapy for families as well. We've partnered with the communities because schools can't do it alone. So therapeutic services throughout Topeka, uh, they partner with us, and they provide family counseling and family services. This can work anywhere, anywhere. Uh, and so when you think about um the services that you need, if you say, man, you know what? We're not allowed to do this or that. There there are ways around this in a way that can still provide other emotionally regulated services for your families. If you're a teacher and you're not the superintendent, uh, or you are a parent and you don't have access to the budget and you don't control the budget, there are some cost-neutral services that can be provided, and some of that's from the partners in your community. Let me give you some examples of that, because I was a principal and I didn't control the district's budget. So as we go to this very next area, and we think about the brain and how it works, and here's why this is important. We have to make sure that we explain uh not only to families, but to those that we have the privilege to work with and alongside that children, and I would also say, and parents who are exposed to enriched uh enriched early education life, they develop a greater capacity for learning throughout life. So think about your parents. Are your parents, or do you have parents that are ex- not exposed to a rich and varied education early in life? Do you have parents that grew up without books? You probably do, if you're like any other school in this nation, especially if you're in a high poverty environment. Those parents were once students, and if they did not have this rich experience, how do they know how to teach their children to learn at high levels? How do they really know how to engage unless someone's engaged with them? Real learning, not just rote exercises, can have a dramatic influence on the physical structure of the brain. So we began uh interacting with our parents in a different kind of way that allowed them to have instructional experiences within the school. Now, not every parent is gonna want that, but many do. Here was my moment of changing the way that I led. Um, this next slide, if you are from St. Louis or if you visit St. Louis, I urge you to visit Ivory Perry Park. This student Rodney McAllister is the reason I wear I wear scarves everywhere I go. It started back when I was a principal uh in St. Louis. I was the youngest principal, and I'm gonna diver- uh stop for just a moment and tell this story for you to continue to think about in terms of your own community, because this is an example of what happens when parents, uh, whether they're in high poverty or not, grow up in a traumatic um uh traumatic experiences around them or traumatic experiences that happened to them. How our systems take care of the most vulnerable, it matters. It matters. And so Rodney McAllister was a student that went to Clark School. Clark School is located um in St. Louis, and there's a divided line of Delmar, and this divided line of a street called Delmar, you have the haves on one side and the have-nots on the other. And one morning I came to school and uh off, two officers called, and I can remember it like it was yesterday. It was Officer Prothor Middleton, and they wanted to know, did all of my students show up? That's a scary question when you're in a school that's a hundred percent free lunch and ninety-nine percent African American. So I sent Ms. Carmen, and this story is written about in the book. Um, I sent Joanne Carmen uh through the building. She's my parent liaison, and I and I asked her, did all the students show up? And in the book, it gives some photos as well of of the classmates and of his teacher. Uh, and they were on their way, and Mr. Ellery Clark uh on his way to the St. Louis Art Museum uh for their field trip for the day, and one student was missing. Uh, within an hour of being uh in this space and from an hour of that phone call, we uh learned that Rodney McAllister died in Ivory Perry Park, right across the street from the school. He was uh identified by the homework in his pocket. He'd been mauled to death by dogs overnight. If you look up this story, we're gonna go to this very next slide, and then we're gonna come back. So we're looking at Rodney as we're having this conversation about what happens when parents aren't involved. What happens if we don't take it, the urgency of saying that we have to change the system and use parents to do it? If you look up this story, and I believe this particular one is from the LA Times, you're gonna find this story. He cried all night. I asked my parents, didn't you hear him crying? And they said, well, yeah, Doc, we heard him crying. He cried and screamed all night long. So I asked the question, why didn't you open the door? And they said, Doc, how dare you? And I write about this in the book. How dare you judge us? Uh, when we call the police, they may or may not come. When we hear gunshots, we hide under the bed. When we hear screaming, we close our blinds and hope that we are not next. We do all that we can to protect ourselves and our community. How dare you judge our community because you don't live here? At that moment, I knew we had to change. I'm gonna go back to that picture uh and go back to that tree that's now grown. You see, we planted that tree and and the classmates, and you can see the handprints in the concrete. We put that concrete there as a as a reminder um of uh who we are and those branches that are branching out. We as educators, as parents, I saw there was an EL teacher on here. I I saw that there was a principal on here. I I I see that there are so many people in our community. We are the branches to reach out to our families to make a difference. You see, we went to Rodney's house, and if you can see through those trees, there's an apartment building that if she was not on drugs, if she had been awake, she could have heard him screaming. If she just looked out the window, she would have seen her son dying in the park that night. When we knocked at the door, she answered, and um she did not realize he didn't come home. The community vilified her, and she was incarcerated for a brief period, and judgment flew from everywhere, but here's what we said to our school. We have to do more. We have got to change our community and transform our community, not just with what we do in school, because he was fine in school. It was after school. It was community around him. And so the book goes into talking about efficacy for our parents, not just teacher efficacy, but parents being empowered and parents knowing that they have to take care of one another. We are one community. So on these next two slides that we get to, and we're gonna skip over that article that you can look up yourself here, I want you to know that we can create schools uh that um take care of the most vulnerable. We can create schools that uh where child's race in their class uh no longer are predictor per- performance. And we do that by building parent capacity. My definition uh of parent capacity is a degree in which parents are empowered and intrinsically engaged, support students' learning and growth. Here's what we did for Rodney. Uh, in that year, uh, I began wearing s- uh scars because I began receiving these Save the Children scarves anonymously with a note that said, Save the Children. And so um I began collecting scars after that year. I have probably thousands of scarves now because it reminds me every day of Rodney. It reminds me what we do and or don't do with parents, with the community, uh, can be life or death for a child. Uh, so we began uh doing everything from putting washer and dryers in our school, and the book talks about this. We told parents they could wash one load of laundry for a day and uh one load of laundry for an hour in exchange for one hour of volunteerism. We had parents volunteering every day because they needed their laundry cleaned, but while they were volunteering, they were learning in the classroom. Uh, we asked to partner with the services that provide GED classes and and put that right there in the school. It didn't cost us anything. They needed a space anyway, and so as fifth graders were being promoted, our parents were getting their GED and graduating that same year. Uh, we began expanding some of the services that we provided, understanding that if they didn't provide them in the community, that schools are the center of the community, and we had an opportunity to build trust with the parents and and our parents. And I will tell you that as trust grew, parents became more engaged and involved and empowered. Parents began looking out for one another and seeing that, wow, our school provided these services, so we too can wrap our a- hands around the school and around each other. Uh, one of the issues that year, uh, they talked about food insecurities. Now, again, I was a principal. I didn't uh manage the budget for the whole school district, but I did manage the school. And so we sat with parents and we began moving parents to this point of being leaders in the community and and they suggested planting food in the community and and we began opening the community gardens right behind our schools where parents' groceries grew at that school. That's an example of empowering and having parents intrinsically engaged. Uh, it may have started with them wanting to wash clothes, but eventually they began coming up to the school all the time, making coffee at the school and and providing other services for other families, bringing other clothes to share with other parents. That's capacity building. Uh, I also stopped judging what I didn't know. And so they are right, uh, that the community they lived in, I didn't know. And so it's one of the reasons why I wear sneakers and and wear in schools every day. I want you to think about your own community and ways that um relationships can be uh created, much like you saw in the video as as they were teaching families how to drive that are coming here from Ukraine. As we go to this very next slide, because we only have about twenty more minutes left together, so I'm gonna go pretty quickly because I wanna save some time for to answer a few of those questions that have come up in the chat. We know that the wealth gap continues to grow between how many families are in poverty. I will tell you this, though. If you change how you support families, I can guarantee you, it can change what the community looks like in terms of economic uh responsibilities and economic prosperity. And I'll give some examples really quickly. Now, for those that are in public schools, and I know we may have some private school folks on this screen, but for those, whether you're in a public school or a public charter school, um, do know that in public schools today, fifteen years ago, um, fifty percent of our families uh that are in public schools were not uh in poverty. Now, in public schools, over fifty percent of the families in public schools are on free lunch at nationally. Here's why that's important. Once you get more than half of your population across the nation in poverty, uh, it really changes uh the services that families need, uh, the requirements that we are uh being met with, that we have to make sure that we serve. It means that schools have to be the center of the community and work with the community to provide services. So when you think about zip codes on this next slide, it just reminds you, it was from a listening tour where a young person came up to me, and he wanted to let me know how best to support him in school and and what his school was like and what he liked in his school. That QR code, again, it's gonna take you to a webpage that gives you all kinds of resources in Topeka Public Schools. Everything we have, we wanna share because we're allies so that you can replicate these services. Within the book, I mentioned certain principals that are changing around and transforming their schools right here in Topeka. I mentioned some across the nation that are not in Topeka. It's intended to let you know that not only uh does this work, but these are other principals and teachers that you can begin to network with and have as allies for yourself. So you may wonder, why does parent capacity matter? And well, if I, if what I've said so far didn't help you think about that, zip codes cannot determine destiny. Right now, you can predict uh outcomes for students based on class and race. Most of you said schools are still segregated, and you wonder why. Well, achievement does follow the contours of poverty, and much of poverty can also be determined based on race. Uh, when you look at communities uh of color that are diverse. So as we go to this very next slide, I wanna give some examples, so you leave here with uh not only why parent capacity matters, I've given you the definition. I shared we were gonna talk about Brown v. Board. I've given you that. Let me tell you why this matters. We all have the capacity to learn, and we all the pa- capacity to grow. Here's the thing, the amount in which we are willing to grow depends largely on our experience, our mindset, and our preparation. Think about the parents that heard Rodney screaming all night. They weren't willing to grow. They weren't willing to step outside their door. Now that changed because the school reps services around them. It's possible to change a community. Clark Elementary became Clark Accelerated Academy, had some of the highest performance in the city, and then I became a superintendent shortly after that. Uh, everything that we've done there, we've replicated. Here in Topeka, we've replicated in Jennings. This is how I know this works. In visiting schools across the country, school leaders often cite lack of parental involvement as a challenge area. Parent capacity is the root issue. But once capacity is developed in ongoing ways, parents and schools can do more as partners in education. You know, without parents, schools are limited because teachers and staff can only impact students during the school day. This is why this is important. If you're in a school or a classroom and you say, man, we're doing everything we possibly can, and still achievement is not changing drastically, go back to parent capacity. Or you may say, man, parents still aren't showing up. All these great things kids are doing. This is why this book was written, to let you know that outcomes can change, communities can be transformed. Uh, let me share with you uh the current graduation rate as of last year. And the first slide, I shared a little bit of that, but this very next slide uh reminds us that uh this change can happen immediately. I started in twenty sixteen. As we continue to wrap our hands around families, have listening tours, provide services that are provide services that are often in the communities but providing them through the school, parents became more trustworthy of the school, became more involved and empowered and ultimately engaged, and performance increased dramatically. This is one of the articles from 2017. As we continued this work, and we move into now, when I started, no one had a 90% graduation rate. Now, all three of our comprehensive schools, even the school Cap City serves predominantly special education student. Hope Street is a school for dropouts and for students who just don't feel like they fit into their regular school. All of those schools have a 90% or above graduation rate. And so the state and the nation, those individual schools are outscoring both of those areas. It's pretty amazing when you think about what the change can be. As we're getting down into the final 10 minutes, and I'm going to open this up for questions, so begin thinking about your own environment, what questions you have, not only about the book and services or challenges, but any questions that you have that can be followed up on later. If you put them in the screen, I'm going to answer just a few questions. And then we're allies. That's the wonderful thing. After this, we're going to stay connected in ways that make sense. If you want your book signed when you purchase your book, just make sure that you let me know, and then I'll take every effort that I can to make sure that you get a signed copy of the book or some way that I can sign that, especially if I'm in your city speaking and having a book signing. I'll be in Missouri and in Kansas, signing at Barnes &amp; Noble in the next few weeks, and perhaps in your city as well. With that, let me go through these final few items very quickly. Graduation rates have continued to increase. I'm going to move beyond that. And as we move beyond those graduation rates, I'm going to mention to you that when mental health improves, academics improves. But here are the four categories on this next slide that parents fall in. Your parents, and I want you to think about where your parents are. Now, as you think about the parental involvement or engagement that you do have or don't have in your building, decide and look at this list and think, "Where do your parents fall?" Now, the book goes into, "What are listeners and participants?" You know, in some schools, parents, they come. And if you're the kind of school where they come to events and they just listen, and they may show up at an event and just participate by showing up. That's one level. And if that's the majority of your parents, now, this is where they generally fall. We don't want to say all parents fall into this, but these are the four general categories. Think about your own parents and your parents in your community. The majority of them, do they just show up to events and listen, sign in, participate, and volunteer, and that's it? And if that's where the majority falls, then put that in the chat. The other ones are allies. There are some parents that will say, "I want to be an ally. I want to make sure that I support you as a school or you as a teacher or you as a principal. And we're going to make sure that we're supporting some other parents as well." So that would be your PTO, if you have an active PTO, and people that are pairing up and becoming allies. Advocates, without going too deep into the book, advocates move beyond allies. In the book, it shows a triangle and how this develops. Parents need to move from just listening and being participants. Now, some will still be there, but move to that next level of being an ally. We didn't have a lot of allies at Clark when I first started. It's why everyone was looking out for themselves and not for the community. We didn't have collective efficacy. We had individuals that were just protecting themselves. But parents eventually moved from allies to advocates, being supportive not only of the school but letting the school board and letting others know what they needed and wanted, letting us know what they needed to thrive, sharing information. When I'm out in the community, they will immediately share what they need. A couple of years ago, they shared they needed a daycare, so we actually opened one with the help of a community agency. It's now self-sufficient. That's advocating. We need parents to use their voice and use their agency. And then the ultimate area is being a leader. We need parents to be leaders in the community and not just relying on your teacher or your principal, but being leaders and advocating for what they need and what they can have in their community. That's how you change legislation. That's how you change how the city council's voting. That's how you ensure that families are making the difference in the community and getting services that they didn't previously have. I'm going to give you two examples of that, and then we're going to stop, and I'm going to turn this over to you really quickly. And we have one short video, and we're now at 6:26. So really quickly, I'm going to get to that last two articles. Oh, and she's jumped already to the video. As we're at this video, just because of time, I'm going to share with you real quickly. There are examples that we won't get to because we're now out of time. And some examples within the book of just some lessons learned. I gave you a few of those lessons. But there are so many creative ways that are cost-neutral to engage parents, to engage, prepare, and inspire parents really for a lifetime of learning. It's our vision and mission here. It's written on everything in Topeka. But you too can do this, no matter what community you're in. This video that we're going to share, it's called "I Believe in You." We filmed it here in Topeka Public Schools. We approached our children, and we wanted our students to know we believed in them. And we shared we believed in them in a way that allowed for our students to hear it, sometimes for the first time. That was an aha moment for some of us to see how students needed to know that they were loved and cared for. Now, we know they all have parents. Parents are their child's first teacher. But students have to know that we believe in them, and their parents do as well, and they do that by us working together. So I'm going to end with some of my children from Topeka.
I was asked to choose a student who I believe in.
A student that I especially believe in and one that makes me want to come to work every day.
That we truly believe in.
And I chose you, Zoe.
And I chose you.
And I chose you, Mackenzie.
And I chose you.
You did?
I did. I chose you for so many reasons. The minute you walked in my room, I could tell you were special.
Your positive attitude and your willingness to literally go out of the way to be kind of others is inspiring to me.
I just love coming to school and saying, "You're so kind and funny and honest."
You inspire me because I know life is a struggle for you right now, but every day you come to school smiling.
I believe in you a lot more than sometimes I think you believe in yourself. And I know things are going to come up that are hard, but I know you're going to get through them, and you're going to continue to smile every day and be the best you can possibly be.
We've known each other for a couple of years, and you've been through a lot, and you continue to push forward and do great things, and you always have a smile on your face.
Because I see you moving yourself in ways that are going to benefit you and help you grow and benefit your future.
I don't know if you remember or not, but when you started first grade with me, you didn't like reading at all. Do you remember that? And now, you love reading, like you want to read all the time.
You have inspired me to be a better teacher. I look forward to your hugs every morning and your smile every time when you come to school.
I chose you because you're a bright spot for lots of people. You come to school and you smile every day, and it can turn a not-so-good day into a really good day. I hope that you believe in yourself just as much as I believe in you.
Thanks, Ms. Yan.
You're welcome.
I believe in myself.
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 I believe in me.
I thank you for joining me this evening. This is 6:30. It is the hour. I saw several of your questions. I answered many of them in the chat. Some of them I didn't go to. I see someone did ask, and I'll mention this last piece about parent capacity as we take this off the screen. This next little slide just says, "I'm counting on you." And if I could have everybody in this screen, let me know. And we're going to stop that video, go to that very last slide at the 6:30 hour, and I'm counting on you. My babies are counting on you. Your babies are counting on you, meaning your parents, not just you individually. And here's what I need you to say. If we were together in a room, I'd ask you to shout back, "Count me in." That's a docu-series that says, "Don't count me out" on ASCD. I'm going to say, "I'm counting on you." I need everybody that's on here with me to say, "Count me in." I'm counting on you. Oh, I'm so glad I can count you in. I'm counting on you. Our kids are counting on you. And I thank you so much for spending just a little bit of your evening. There was a question about alternative schools, and has it been measured in alternative schools? The answer is yes. Hope Street, that dropout school that has one of the highest graduation rates in the state, I will tell you, parent involvement in that school is through the roof. And so if you want to learn more, check out the book or take a look at our website. We are excited about what you'll do from here. Thank you to all of our educators. As you're signing on, we're going to turn on "Everybody Likes Michael Jackson" and the ABC song. We're going to turn that on, unless Melissa has a few more things to share with you. Thank you for joining me this evening.
I just want to thank Dr. Anderson for just a wonderful, inspiring presentation. I hope everybody who is here gets a copy of the book. I can't wait for mine to arrive. So thank you all so much, and we hope to see you at another Corwin webinar.
Thank you to Corwin for doing that for us this evening, for those that joined us and those that'll be watching this video later.